Do you want to call this meeting to order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to the Board of Correspondence, please.
Amy Johnson is absent. Oliver's president.
All right, so we're going to have our board correspondent report or CISA report. Chrissy?
The CISA team met virtually this month and the largest part of it was the 2022-2023 fiscal audit report from CLA. So we went over that in great detail with the CLA rep. And then the only thing to touch on was the Title IX training, which I'm assuming Chrissy will talk about as well.
And it's summer, so we have a student representative report. Misconceptions and rumors. I am going to take this opportunity to sort of talk about the misconception that we can use referendum money for anything that we want. And that is not at all true. The referendum money, the exact total that we put down in terms of approval, the $10,050,000, is allocated specifically for the things that were listed in the referendum question. I think the reason that it is coming up right now is tied to the fact that we are talking about moving the football up here. And the timing is, we just passed a referendum. So I think that's part of the confusion out there. But basically, the reason we're talking about it right now does have something to do with the referendum because we are going to be doing track work up there. And if we do decide to move the football field, we certainly don't want to work on the track and then have to redo anything. The other thing is there are expenses that have come up in terms of, some of them not new. And in fact, the discussion of moving the football field here is not a brand-new discussion. The reason, sort of the urgency is based on the track. Repair is that we did get approved through the referendum and also the fact that there are some costs at Perry Field. The press box is our responsibility. It needs replacement. The sound system, there's really no sound system. We bring portable speakers that wouldn't work if it rained. The scoreboard is a fairly expensive thing that we have to look at. So the combination of expenses there, the track work up, you know, that is going to be done with the referendum, I think is the reason that there's confusion out there. But rest assured, we cannot use any referendum money for anything other than what was asked on the question. And if we don't need it all for what was asked on the question, it's not like we can just say, oh, well, you know, we'll dive into other projects. So that's all I have to say about that. Welcome, Jessie.
Thank you.
You were hardly looking at all. Did anybody sign in?
No.
All right. I don't have any other announcements, so we'll move into administration reports.
All right, Amber's man in the computer right now, so. Key takeaways for tonight, it should say July, sorry, not June there. Monthly update on district finances. We'll do a quarterly end-of-year review of our fund balances. Amber is going to speak about our preliminary general aid that we received for 2425. And I will give an update on the auxiliary gym floor, so.
Okay, so here's your monthly update on the budget summary. We are at year-end, so at or close to 100% is ideal, which you can see most of our numbers are. We did really good this year. Our operating funds for Fund 10 came in well below our budgeted amount, so we're only at 96%. This plays a couple of key factors in general aid, which we're going to talk about in just a little bit. We had some stuff that really helped play into the expenses coming in under below. One of those was a lot of staff out on unpaid leave for FMLA reasons. That was a huge portion of it. So it was way more than we were anticipating when we were trying to calculate it all out. We also had Fund, I put in 21, but it's supposed to say 27 there, sorry. Fund 27 transfer was approximately $36,000 less than we thought it was going to be. So, and that probably played a role in that we had a teacher that was not replaced during the year. So that helped reduce that amount. At this point, all the year-end entries have been made. Other than the ones that the auditors provide to us, they started their work today in our office. So so far, it's going good. They think they're going to be out of here by Thursday, so that's good news. Some other significant items as well for 2324 year. Both Funds 10 and 80 are increasing their fund balance reserves. The significant amount of unpaid leave resulted in a one-time savings, so we're going to try and take advantage of that and transfer some additional money over to Fund 46 under the rules and regulations, state statutes. We can do that as long as you guys approve the transfer, do the budget amendment, and complete it before July 30. So we got plenty of time to get that done. Another item I just want to reiterate from our last meeting, we talked about it, but it's worth repeating. Our school credit rating was increased. So the district's credit rating went up, which is awesome news. That means our referendum debt was issued at a lower-than-expected interest rate, 4.28% versus the 5.25 that we used during our referendum discussions. So that means our annual debt service payments are going to be lower than what we had anticipated. So if you remember the community meetings we were having during the referendum, we talked about there's only so many things we can control within the tax levies. The debt portion is one of those. It will be less than we had anticipated, which is excellent because that's what our promise to the public was. So. And then our investment earnings were much larger than we originally anticipated. And that's because the feds never lowered the rates at all during the year, so. And then these other funds, again, just the debt. Fund 38 is the non-referendum debt. Made our payments on time. That fund or that debt is now paid off, so you will not see Fund 38 on next year's budget. The referendum debt, this is the existing debt that we have out there from the last referendum. Revenues were just a little bit higher than we anticipated. Again, that's those investment earnings. So remember, we set our levy to kind of keep that levy rate smooth each year for the debt portion. And then we take that money and put it in savings to help earn interest so we don't have to collect as much money down the road, so. And then Fund 46, our long-term capital improvement. Again, interest earnings were up there. No expenses were planned for this year, so that's normal to be zero. And then because we are at the end of quarter and end of the fiscal year, here are your fund balances. And if you look at that yellow line for Fund 10, you'll just see that little uptick. That is due in large part to those one-time savings that we've seen this year. For example, the unpaid wages. So that's not something we're going to see every single year. We just got, I guess, lucky, you know, this year that we had so many that were out unpaid, so that helped save us money. Fund 27 operates with that negative fund balance all throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, they're at zero, so you can see the beginning and ending are at that zero line, just as they should be. Fund 50 guidelines are set by DPI. And depending on which one you go by, they should be between 33 or 67%. We are right at 51%, so we are good to go for next year. And then Fund 80 is that community services fund. This one should have a fund balance reserve. It does not need to be as high as Fund 10 because they are not supporting all those other funds that are running in the negative throughout the year. So it's at 19%, which is pretty good. I'd feel a little more comfortable if that was around 20% to 25%, but it's not the end of the world. I'm doing pretty good there. So preliminary general aid for 2425. This has kind of been in the news. This weekend, my sister opened the paper and went, oh, did you see this? Yes, I did. The current July estimate for Algoma is that we will get about $5,310,250. This is $270,000 less than we received this year. Now, that doesn't mean the school district gets less money because we don't have levy limits. We have revenue limits. So DPI tells us this is the pot of money you get. And then they look at the aid and say, okay, here's the aid we're going to give you so you don't have to put that on the tax rolls. And now the rest goes to taxes. So because we're getting less aid next year, that means the amount that goes to the tax roll is going to go up. We don't control that. DPI does. The aid amount is based on budget numbers at this point. So the entire state, all the districts have their budgets. And then DPI figures this out. In October, they will look at what our actual amounts were and then give us that new number based on the actuals. So this number is going to change, guaranteed, okay? So one of the things that is on your agenda tonight is that additional transfer. Because we had that reduction in our expenses, we can capture that by a transfer to Fund 46. Any transfers out to Fund 46 do count in that formula for, not debatable expenses, that's for for calculating this aid, shareable expenses, that's what it is. So if we utilize that savings and transfer this money over for capital in the future, it will help increase the amount of aid we will get by getting us closer to that budget number. If we don't do that, the amount of aid we get will be even less than what they've currently estimated. So just keep that in the back of your minds. And now it's Jessie's turn.
All right, any questions for Amber? She did a great job. All right, auxiliary gym. So we have an install date of August 7th. We're excited. From the company, we'll be coming up to install. Prior to install, our own facility crew needs to strip the wax off the floor and move everything out. So we're looking at doing that August 5th and August 6th. I've been working with Whitney very closely on how do we support the community that uses that space on a regular basis? So they're going to be able to go into the fieldhouse and play their pickleball or do their walking in there. We'll work around all of our practice schedules for fall sports as well. The auxiliary gym will be off limits for about three weeks while it's installed and the test is set and cure, basically, because it's a poured surface that they're putting over the top. So I think it's going to look really nice when it's all done. If you can go to the next slide, Amber. I've got a drawing that we were sent last week that you can see. It's going to be a gray floor, stone gray, I think it was called, is what we went with. All of the lines that are going to be painted on are exactly what we have currently. The only difference you'll see is that we are going to add the district logo in the middle of the court, so.
Heard a lot about the district logo, some face left, some face right. Is this the official district logo? Because this is looking backwards instead of looking forwards, so just asking.
I've heard of both ways, so I look at that one and that one's facing that way.
And which way you're going. Do you want to put two? One each way?
That's the only, I would just ask.
Two-headed wolf?
Our documents usually have them going backwards, but left.
Pretty much. Looks good.
That is all I have.
All right. Yeah, looks good. Moving on, elementary principals report.
Okay, quick staffing update. So we are still working on finding a couple of positions, finding candidates for a couple of positions. That would include our library media specialist and also an elementary Spanish teacher. We also have a couple of long-term leaves that we are already starting to plan for, so we're kind of, we kind of have that in the back of our minds, too. So we'll continue the hunt there. We still have some time, but we're trying to also think a little bit differently on how we can fill some of those toughest, tougher-to-fill positions. And then I'm excited to share that our main office at the elementary school has gotten an upgrade. Thanks very much in part to Shelley. She definitely made this happen. We kind of had been talking about just wanting to bring some life to the elementary school office for a really long time. It was kind of a, the evolution of the project was really kind of fun. We started with, I think, three paint samples that we put on the wall. Then we looked at it for a couple of days, and then we got more paint samples. And then I think we had even a couple more after that point. And then we're like, wouldn't it be great if you had a mural? And then Shelley contacted Yonder. And they, they kind of emailed back and forth, came up with a plan. Lindsay Harmon was part of that because she was coordinating summer school at that time, so spent a lot of time in the office. So they sent some, some mock-up designs. And then it just kind of happened really quickly. And if you saw the picture on Facebook, it looks really cool. The wolf is facing. It is facing forward instead of all of these other wolves, but I don't know what to say about that.
I want to rethink that gym floor a little bit.
But huge thank you to Shelley. She, in addition to coordinating all the logistics with that, she painted the other four walls of the office. She settled on some paw prints above the opposite wall, above the big window. And then also painted the door and window turn in black, which was the project. So she really put in a ton of time, but it looks amazing. So if you have the chance to stop in anytime, feel free to check it out. It's pretty awesome. And then also, Yonder, they squeezed us in really quickly. I would say within like two days, they were, they made their way in. So we really appreciate that, and it looks wonderful, so.
Good.
So yeah.
All right. Middle school, high school, principals report.
Okay, so starting off, let's start off with summer school. So summer school, this is where we do always have the leadership high venture, but I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what actually takes place outside of that. And we have two or three teachers that usually participate in summer school, depending on the number of students that have a need. The reason we offer it is if students are unable to or choose not to pass their classes during the regularly scheduled school year, we extend that school year and work with those students to be able to pass their classes, typically with a grade of D for done. And it's most often associated with core classes, okay? So this year, Alex Van Lannan facilitated that. He worked mostly with, well, we had one student. So there was one student that participated in it. However, it was open to any student that wants to complete those grades. And in the past, there's been, I guess, like about three or four years ago, there's 20-plus kids. So it goes up or down depending on the ambition of the kid. But we do have that available for students when they, you know, when they act like kids and don't pass their classes and they have to, we have to give them an opportunity to fix that. So just wanted to give you that information, that that takes place. Next, coaches handbook. So Whitney and I went through the coach's handbook pretty extensively this year. In the past, we just kind of looked it over and made sure that it was up to date with work policy, et cetera. This summer, we went through it page by page, paragraph by paragraph, and really kind of took it apart and put it back together so that it made more sense for what current practices are. And I don't think that's been done. Well, I know I didn't do it in depth when I was AD for so, it hasn't been done for probably 10, 12 years. We did, of course, update the policy and make it consistent with what the work policies are. As you know, you've updated many policies, so we reflected those in the coach's handbook. Also, just tried to streamline the language before it was very athletic-focused. It's still athletic-focused, but we tried to include more of the clubs and activities that would operate under that. So advisors is often seen as their coaches, or we just left it as coaches, but trying to be more inclusive with the language. Same thing with the co-curricular handbook. We really looked closely at that, made sure that we had some of the new timeline language. I think Jessie helped with the timeline language. And some of the other policies that are updated that affect athletics, we updated those handbooks for your approval. And then last thing I want to talk about was the speed and agility classes that take place. And this had a lot of different iterations over the years. There's always been some sort of class offered at the school. This year, it's being offered in the mornings, 7:00 to 8:30. It's running June 10th all the way through August 1st. And the idea, the purpose of it is to help students understand how they move. So really working on the quality of their movement, working on the quality of their lifts, the quality of how they do things so that they can improve their strength, their explosion, their speed, their agility, their mobility, all those things. Right now, 15 to 20 students are attending, split about down the middle, half and a half, half or half or females, half or males. Andy Kraut Kramer, who as you know is a, he was a strength, speed and strength condition, or a strength coach. Now, our PE coach is working with Whitney Eber and is leading those classes. Occasionally, we have Kim Yeager will go in and work with the kids. And just recently, Tanner Bordalini came in and spent some time with the kids. Not only did he talk to them about, a little bit about his journey into the NFL, also did some drills with the kids and also just tried to teach them a little bit about persistence and setting goals and reaching for those goals. And that's what I've got for you.
I have a couple formatting and typos in the two documents on this handoff to you before we go into post.
Sure.
I just have, I just have one question.
Yep.
On the co-curricular handbook, and this is just from my knowledge.
Yeah.
Homeschool students can participate, right?
Correct.
So how are they regulated, like as far as grades and that?
Yeah, so the only way we can regulate those grades is to contact and work with the parents because the parents are the teachers that grade.
Sure.
So we do keep in touch with them. Typically, we don't have any issues with homeschool parents or with the parents or with the kids, honestly, maintaining grades. It's similar to the parochial school students. When we have parochial school students that participate, we contact the parochial school and ask them for the grades for those kids. So yeah, it's on our system, I guess.
Sounds good.
And I have sort of a nurse comment. For the coaching advisor handbook. The paid coaches must be CPR, first aid, and AED trained within 12 months of their being put in that position. Hoping that we're encouraging them not to wait 12 months to get that because these are of.
Right. So typically, our CPR classes are in the AD, first aid courses. The first aid course is usually online, so it's available to them at any time. There's a couple of choices they have. They will usually go through the National Federation of High School Athletics or Sports. And then CPR courses are usually offered during our in-service, that week before kids come back. So we encourage coaches to attend that one so they're ready to go.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, thanks, Dave. Moving on. Pathfinder, Elmo Venture Academy, and Pack of Pups.
So I will start with AVA. Some of our students who are going to Costa Rica are working at the Perry Field 100-year event. I think that's two weekends, I think. To raise some funds, they're going to be doing face painting and mold making, to raise some money for their trip. Abby and I, so the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools has a conference every summer that we're required to attend through a grant. So this year, Abby and I are required to speak at the event because our grant is ending. So we will be speaking next week on student-led, project-based learning. So we just got kind of our questions. They're on a panel. So there's two other schools with us we'll be speaking about, so that's exciting. It's virtual, so. Abby's been working with Headrush, so Headrush is a platform that we use for kids to store all of their projects in. It's where all the grading goes through for AVA to make our report cards a little more comprehensive and get their GPAs on there. Because I know that's been a huge question in the past for GPAs for our kids on AVA, especially with participating in school events. So she's working with them this summer. She's kind of been heading a lot of stuff with Headrush to also work with other schools to make things more comprehensive on there. And then we also have a group of students working with Yonder to do a mural on the stairwell. If you look anywhere out, it's in the process right now, but, which will complete one of their elective credits for the year. So they started it at semester. Don's been great, he's been working with AVA since the beginning with the kids doing murals, but it's just a different group of kids that's completing that. For Pathfinder, we have some kids that are working through the summer. We have two kids who finish up their credits to graduate, which is always exciting. It's always kind of like their second chance to be able to earn that diploma. So we have two students handling stuff. We have three more students who are working on different credits to try and catch up. And then for Pack of Pups, we have a new playground for our older kids. The playground that they came in, we're just waiting to get it put up, so we're very excited about that. We have other different playground toys. I put together three cozy hoops today, so. That was my entire day today. But they're all really excited about it. So I'm just trying to update some of the stuff that was left over, that's, you know, faded and broken. And we got a grant to do that, so. Yeah, I'm excited. And we are completely packed there this summer.
Are we installing it, like our guys, or is there somebody coming in to do it?
Well.
We talked about it today, actually, so.
And the grade point averages by Headrush that will help since we're mandated to have class rank now and everybody.
Yep, that was a huge part of it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep moving. Special ed wellness report, Mary.
Yeah, I recently had the opportunity to meet with the other two county directors. Even though I'm new in my role, I'm now the veteran director in the county, which is kind of scary, really, but. I met with Sandy Morton from Kiwanis, who started in general last year. And then Jane Matthews started July 1. So we met over Cafe Talazo and just kind of talked through some different things and how we're hoping to meet a little bit more frequently and work with. Through CISA 7, they have like a new directors academy that we're going to attend together just to kind of support one another and collaborate throughout the school year. So that's really nice. And then summer projects, nothing too exciting, but July 15th today is the day that our special ed software rolls over for the next school year. So I've just been making sure that everything is finalized and that all of our reports are known in place and that we're filing and whatnot. On top of that, I'm just kind of looking at some different job descriptions. I know that wasn't the thing that Jessie was working on as well and what the evaluation rubrics will look like for our career professionals and how we can help keep that a little bit more consistent. And one other thing that I didn't put in here, the abilities project, as you may know, has, Amy Schamberger has decided to discontinue it with hopes that maybe she will start a new project with some other students in the future. But with the funds that they raised, they are donating furniture to the Wellness Center. And they plan to put that in that entryway on July 31st, I believe. So that's really exciting and a way to kind of leave their mark, so.
Questions for Mary? All right, we'll keep moving. We had one committee meet. That was policy and practice.
Yes, we met last week and you guys got lots of handouts in your board packets. Lots of fun reading. Talked about Title IX. We have one policy that'll go in effect until the end of the month. And then the new one will go into effect August 1st. We did a lot of Miola revisions and then a handful of job descriptions, which will all be on the agenda tonight.
Any questions or discussion? Okay. The reason we have school board convention on the agenda is because August, the middle of August is when we can start making hotel reservations. And so that is the main reason why we sort of want to get a handle on who thinks they're going to be able to go so that we can get a lot of rooms in the hotel that we want to get. So think hard about it. And I'm thinking by, you know, beginning of August, maybe, trying to let Jessie know.
Yeah, reservations open up August 13th is the first day we can make calls.
So that would be, yeah, so that would be sort of the deadline. We can cancel, but there's always a penalty. I mean, you don't have to pay for the whole reservation, but there's also a little bit of a penalty if we make a reservation.
This is in Green Bay, isn't it? Isn't it in Green Bay?
No, it's in Milwaukee.
Oh, in Milwaukee. I thought it was in Green Bay.
It's in Milwaukee. And we usually, the hotels all require a three-night reservation. Even if you only go for two, you pay for three. So we usually go down on Tuesday afternoon. Again. Again, we have a different, um, group of board members with, with different work requirements and things, so, um, it was just convenient to go down earlier on a Tuesday to get there and grab our res, you know, our registration materials and things. But if, um, because it is nice to go as a group, we usually take a van. And, um, um, if those that are interested in going would be, if it would be better for their schedule for us to go later on Tuesday, that certainly can be something that we could look at. I wouldn't recommend trying to do a super early Wednesday morning, because sessions do start on Wednesday, and so it's nice to have a registration, be ready to get to the eight o'clock sessions and stuff. So, anyway, think about it, um, and, um, hopefully, um, we can get a group going down there.
All right, moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and a policy and practice committee meeting minutes of July eighth.
Now, before we prove that, there were a couple, um, spelling errors. I don't know if that's a big deal or not, but, and then there was one that was a monetary error that had, uh, supposed to be eight hundred thousand, and there's a period instead of a comma.
So with the grammatical changes, which maybe we can, um, if you'd be willing to circumvent and get them to show?
Okay, sure.
All right. So other, as far as content and everything.
Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve with the grammatical and corrections?
So moved.
I'll second.
Chrissy, second. Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve bills.
So move, second.
Motion made by Chris Sly, seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the co-curricular code handbook as presented.
Move.
Motion made by Jeremy, do I hear a second? Seconded by Lonnie. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the coaches' advisors handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised Miola policies. Zero one six four, two one three one, three one two oh point zero four, three one two oh point zero eight, three four three one, four one two zero point zero four, four four three one, fifty two hundred, fifty three thirty, fifty four thirty, fifty four sixty, fifty five oh five, fifty six ten, fifty seven seventy one, sixty four twenty three, seventy five forty point zero five, seventy five forty four, eighty three ninety five, eighty five hundred, eighty five ten, eighty five thirty one, eighty five thirty, eighty five fifty, eighty six hundred, eighty six oh one, eighty six sixty, and eighty six eighty.
So moved.
Second.
And a second, and a second, and, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Who's seconding, sorry?
Chris Sly. Sorry. All right, I need a motion to approve the rescinded Miola policies. Four one six two, eight six four zero, and eight six five one.
So move.
Motion made by Chris Benish.
Second.
Seconded by Jeremy, and just in case, um, just for clarification, they were rescinded because the content was absorbed in other. So they didn't really eliminate the content, they just moved it into other policies. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye, go ahead.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new Miola policy. Five six one zero point zero three.
So move.
Made by Jeremy.
Second.
Seconded by.
This you can have.
Sorry, Chrissy, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised Miola Title Nine policy, two two six six. Motion made by Lonnie.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the new Miola Title Nine policy, two two four four.
I'll move.
Made by Chris Sly.
Second.
Seconded by Lonnie.
Just take tar.
That should be two two six forms.
The, the new, the new one?
Policy numbers.
Oh, okay. So we will, that was Chris Sly and Lonnie, so we are revising that to approving federal line policy two two six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I need a motion to approve the revised employee handbook.
So move.
Motion made by Lonnie. Seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the revised middle school, high school student handbook.
So move.
Made by Jeremy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chrissy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the revised elementary student handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Chrissy, seconded, what's that?
Chris Sly.
By Chris Sly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the job descriptions as presented.
So move.
Motion made by Lonnie.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the school's security assessment after action reports for the elementary and middle high schools.
So move.
Seconded by Jeremy, seconded by Chris Sly. Questions or discussion?
They talked a lot about not locking doors, too. I noticed that was.
Yeah.
Paramount, didn't you, both of them?
As a recommendation to lock the doors when they're teaching, to add that layer of security, yeah.
Is that something? We've been having that discussion, as admin came over this summer.
But that's why you do, you know, assessments, so that you can get recommendations, so. And some of the other recommendations are gonna be taken care of with our changes with the referendum, so.
Is this an outside party? I guess, I don't remember this being a good topic, or you guys did this?
Uh, I did the assessment. Um, the assessment's laid out, basically. Uh, but this is an annual report that needs to be completed, approved by the board, and then submitted to the Department of Justice, the Division of Office of School Safety, to receive the grant funding that we get.
I didn't know if it was an external or purpose, so, very good info.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the additional transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Forty-Six, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chrissy. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is that a roll call vote?
Um, I think since it's just a transfer, unless, I mean, we could do a roll call. Since it's that amount of money, I mean, it's not new monies, but let's do a roll call. Jeremy?
Yes.
Yes.
Lonnie.
Yes.
You have a seat? Chris?
Yes.
And I also say yes. All right. Um, I need a motion to approve the budget amendment for Fund Ten and for Fund Forty-Six for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year, and that goes along with the transfer we just talked about.
So move. Second.
By Chris Benish, seconded by Chris Sly. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Wisconsin model academic standards for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Jeremy, seconded by Chris Benish. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute and can apply subsection one and C, for purposes of hires and staff.
So moved.
Chrissy.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Benish.
Yes.
Chrissy.
Yes.
Yep, yes.
Yes.